Business and page number page one.
Sorry.
It's okay. Okay. Everybody ready? Okay. Good morning, everybody. It is nine oh four and I will call this meeting to order. Um, can I have someone move approval of the agenda? By Director Rainbow, second by Director Birch Jones. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. And we'll go right into our regional moment, the resort municipality of Whistler.
Thank you Chair Ford. Oh, look at this. Okay. So I'm, were you going to show the video? Am I starting now? Okay.
Apologies, I haven't received a video, sorry, through the chair. I haven't received a video.
Okay, perfect. I will start now then, that's fine. Um, so uh, this will seem, thank you for the opportunity to speak today. Um, I have always thought that these regional moments are very rich for me to be able to learn about the region that um, privileged to sit on the board and, and, and make decisions for. And so um, the opportunity to talk about our town is, is a privilege. So um, Whistler's uh, on shared uh, territory of the Squamish and the Lilwat. There's a story of the, of Spohas, which is a, was a shared village site that's south of um, Whistler near Rebel Creek. Um, and it was, it has often been talked about as a place where the nations met. Um, a friend of mine tells a story about how the water flows um, north and south out of Alta Lake and all of the water that flows uh, um, north goes into all Lilwat Territory and, and flowing south to Squamish Territory. So um, and, and, and Black Tusk is a big part of the story about our region. It's a place of demarcation. It's a special place. It's an important place. And it's one that gets talked about in a number of different stories about the history of Whistler. Uh, next slide, please. In the early nineteen hundreds, Whistler was a logging town. You've heard of Parkhurst. Um, and most of the valley was logged. Uh, and so most of it is second growth. Parkhurst is on the east side of Green Lake. Um, the municipality now owns it, about two hundred acres on the east side of Green Lake. Um, and the north side of Green Lake. Um, and so we have a rich logging history. You'll hear lots of um, the names of trails and the names of, 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 of ski runs. Uh, have this history and a lot of this sort of community leaders from this town uh, were loggers and, and foresters. So Don McLaurin is someone who a lot of people in our community speak about with a lot of love and um, he did a lot of the sort of forestry work in, in later nineteen hundreds, but certainly in the early nineteen hundreds, logging was a part, a big part of our community. Next slide, please. And the twenties, thirties, forties, fifties, it was a fishing resort. My grandparents', uh, great grandparents honeymooned at the Rainbow Lodge, which uh, is on the, or on the west side of Alta Lake. And it was a summer destination. It was where people came to fish and be at the lake. Um, it wasn't really considered a winter destination for most people from the lower mainland. They, they more thought of the North Shore Mountains as sort of the winter place. And so um, Whistler was a place where people came to, to enjoy lakes for um, the first half of the twentieth century. Next slide, please. Oh, and that's Myrtle Philip, but on to the next one. Um, so I'm probably uh, not in that ski line uh, because that was before my time, but that's how I remember my early days uh, is waiting in these ridiculously long lines uh, in Creekside. Um, in the nineteen six, in nineteen sixty, some business people from Vancouver started to talk. They, they traveled down to the um, Lake Placid, was it the Lake Placid Games in nineteen sixty? Let's assume it was the Lake Placid Games in nineteen sixty. And they uh, were inspired and started to think about the opportunity of hosting the Olympics in Whistler in nineteen sixty-eight. And I've told this story many, many, many times, but I was speaking to Gary Watson, who was one of those people and is still a resident of our community about what kind of an Olympics was it? Were, was it going to be, we were going to host some of the events and then the most events will happen in Vancouver and be similar to twenty ten. And he said, no, it was a hundred percent of uh, Whistler Games uh, bid for nineteen sixty-eight. And at that point, there was about two hundred people that lived here. There was no electricity. And they would have had to have built a hockey rink, a speed skating oval. Uh, it was, and in his words, it was preposterous. It was simply preposterous. But this nineteen sixties really turned Whistler towards becoming a ski resort. Um, that vision for a, a, an Olympics really sparked a lot of those people from the lower mainland to imagine that Whistler could become not just a summer place, but a winter place. Next slide, please. This is our very first municipal council. Um, Gary, who I just spoke about is on the far right as you look. Um, and we were Canada's first resort municipality. And so that meant and has meant ever since that Whistler has this dual mandate that we are responsible to um, perform the tasks of a municipality, but also participate in tourism in a more um, sort of integrated fashion. We, we uh, have our own destination management or organization that has taxing authority. Um, we own a golf course. Uh, there is a number of sort of unique features to Whistler that were a first in the seventies. And Al Rain, who is the second from the left, was an appointee of the province and sat on council appointed by the province sort of to manage and monitor their asset um, as it was perceived. But that really set the course for the kind of municipality that we would become. Next slide, please. Um, next slide, please. Uh-oh. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Uh, good. So um, uh, the nineteen eighties, we built Whistler Village. The fellow there is in, is the landscape architect in California named Eldon Beck. And the village was his vision. And as the story goes, those two people that I talked about on that first council, Al Rain and Gary Watson flew to California. And the original plan was to have a main street with first, second, third, fourth, and a parking lot between the mountains. And um, and that, so it would have been a very much a car-centric village. And for all of you who have walked through our village, you know that all of the cars are underneath and that it's a walking village. And so that vision was Eldon's and he talked, he's written a book called Human Scale Architecture. And that was the vision for this place was that you would feel like you're in a river meandering through the mountains and that you're never uh, you, you, you never know necessarily where you are, but you're never lost. You're always um, uh, sort of in, in a place that's somewhat familiar with little side eddies where you can get lost and have conversations. And covered walkways along the whole village stroll for when it rains and when it's, it's bad weather. Um, big uh, uh, buildings near the mountain. Uh, and it sort of tapers away from the mountain to sort of fit in with the overall landscape of the mountain and, and tries to um, ensure that the mountains dominate um, the, the setting. Uh, this was where my grandfather would take me when I was five years old to watch bears eat garbage. So this whole village was built right between Whistler and Blackhome where the old garbage dump was. And it allowed us to actually have two ski hills that were serviced out of the same village, which is pretty special. But Eldon Beck um, is still around and he still visits us every once in a while to sort of enjoy um, seeing his vision come to reality, which is neat. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Sorry. Uh, and so that was the eighties of building the village. The nineties really focused of our community was that we were going to be world-class, that we were going to be the number one rated ski resort in the world. Um, Rob Boyd uh, competed on the Dave Murray downhill and won uh, a world cup in Whistler. And we were, we kind of achieved that vision as a community being rated the number one ski resort in North America. I think seven years running. Um, and it was a really sort of centering vision for our community, funny enough. Um, but it is uh, yeah, I would say that we became world-class and also diversified the economy. One of the things that we had spent a lot of time and energy on is how do you ensure that you're not just open for six months a year and then the rest of the time, people don't have paychecks in their pockets? Uh, if we can stay open year-round, then the workers who live here and the families who live here can um, feed themselves uh, year-round. And so the summer offerings, uh, it's funny to say, because like I said at the beginning, we started as a Rainbow Lodge summer place, but by the time the nineteen nineties were here, we were very much winter-focused. And so the diversification of our tourism economy meant bringing in golf and mountain biking and, and keeping restaurants open. And that's been a real win for our community over time. It's a, it's a mixed blessing, but now we have less of those shoulder seasons where people weren't getting paid. Next slide, please. This is a photo. Uh, does anybody know any guesses when this is? You can't guess if you, if you already know. Any guesses?
Canada wins the gold medal in hockey.
Okay, but look at people's faces.
Yeah, Crosby just scored.
Really? They don't look happy to me.
Oh, no.
Okay, next slide, please. This is nineteen thirty-five of the third period when the Americans scored to tie it, to send it to overtime. And that's me in the bottom right. You can see uh, my wife is above my, over to the right with her mouth open. My daughter's there draped in the Canadian flag. My brother is there like this with his hands on his face. My dad is over on the far right with his hands on his head like this. Um, it is such a special photo for me because it's a moment in time. And we all know what happened. Like Tony just said, we went on to win it, but this sort of devastation of a country. And I just show this to say that the two thousands were all about getting ready for twenty ten and sort of living that dream that we talked about since uh, nineteen sixty. And so it was special. The village was just full to bursting, but it felt like it all fit. Um, so it was a time where our community sort of lived out a dream that we had had for a very long time, which was, which was really neat. Next slide. Uh, twenty ten, we diversified within tourism. We started to bring a lot of more arts and culture and uh, big festivals. Um, and uh, that was sort of a, a real focus of us after the games. That's when the O'Dean Art Museum came in. We had the Cultural Connector be built. We started to see a lot of the infrastructure that was built during the games really realized uh, in it to its full potential. All the people moved into those houses that came as a part of the games. And so it was a pretty special time. Next slide, please. So our vision is Whistler where community thrives, nature is protected and guests are inspired. Uh, and that has, comes out of a long time of uh, conversation about the idea that we care about the people. We care about the environment and we care about the uh, tourism economy. And um, that is our new OCP that came into play in the, in two thousand and eighteen. And I think it really says uh, who we are as a community. Whistler where community thrives, nature is protected and guests are inspired. Next slide, please. This is uh, um, Henrik Robert, he's the, Carl Henrik Robert, he is the founder of the Natural Step. And I just wanted to show this is that one of, I would say, Whistler's prime goals is this idea of protecting this place. We want to protect what it uh, is. And for us, Carl Henrik Robert brought the Natural Step to us, which talks a lot about how you do that. And so that informed the Whistler twenty twenty process, which then sort of installed those ways of protecting your place into our uh, OCP, uh, which I think is an important note. Next slide, please. And then care deeply about these people. I think for Whistler to be that resort municipality that we talked about in the nineteen seventies and that the province gave us the mandate to be, the workers, the families, the people who call this home um, need to be able to uh, have their lives expand. And uh, that knowledge that housing prices would be out of the reach of the people that lived in this community is something that uh, we understood early. It has now got to the point that is just, I mean, I, I don't need to tell anyone on this call, but uh, the founding of the Whistler Housing Authority to allow the workers to live in this community and to call this home has been a critical feature of the success that we've had. And in my view, it's something we as local government and, and we as Whistlerites need to remain focused on. Um, Whistler has a target of seventy-five percent of our workforce living in Whistler. Uh, something we've achieved for, I think, twen- fifteen years now. Um, and uh, for us to be able to continue to do that, um, we're going to need to continue to invest in housing that keeps people here. Uh, that seventy-five percent is a really big deal. Other resorts around the world are nowhere close. Fails at thirty-five, Aspen's at eight. Um, so that investment in keeping people in the community so they don't have to get on buses and drive cars long distances is a really uh, big deal for, for quality of life. Commuting takes a lot of time out of uh, people's lives for, as far as coaching soccer and, and being a part of community organizations. So care deeply about these people. Next slide, please. Before the pandemic, we were talking all about over tourism. How do we manage all the visitation? And that was really sort of the focus of our conversation going into the pandemic. Next slide, please. We'd been focusing a lot of our time on seasonal dispersion. How do we fill up those times when there aren't many people here in the villages empty? Next slide, please. Um, and then I, actually, next slide, please. Okay, back slide, please. I had a, a, a missing slide. Anyway, I just wanted to acknowledge that uh, we are now going through uh, an investigation process to understand the twenty thirty uh, Olympic opportunity. And that, that has been fascinating so far. There's a huge amount of work left to do to understand whether this is something that the region and, and the, the host for First Nations want to go down this path, but certainly it's a process and a project that I have found fascinating. Um, you know, some of the interesting things about the opportunities that all the infrastructure is built. Um, though, one of the more challenging parts of it is that first piece I talked about before um, we got to this slide, which is, I expect, and I think most of us expect, that we will get right back to twenty eighteen as far as visitation is concerned and beyond. All of what we experienced through the pandemic, I think we will start to see more and more of that. And the way that we manage that tourism so that our communities don't become places that feel overwhelmed will be very important. And so for us, as we consider the Olympic opportunity at ensuring that whatever comes out of it, the places that we live, this corridor um, and the, the host nations are, are better places as a result of it. And so that's really what we've been taking into the conversations as we investigate it. And there's still a lot more work to do to understand it better. Uh, next slide, please. Thanks. I am again grateful to be able to present to you a little bit of the history of our town.
Thank you, Director Crompton. That was good. Really good. Any comments or questions?
That was great.
Thank you. Thumbs up.
All right.
Excellent.
Yeah, that was, that was good.
Should have bought some houses in the seventies.
You should have bought real estate in the seventies.
I remember driving up to Gun Lake back in the early seventies and stopping at the garbage dump to look at the bears. And, and thinking about, why didn't I buy some property there?
Yep. There we are. Um, okay, we have six minutes until our delegation. Is she here?
Um, we have one.
Yes. Yes. Yes, it looks like she is here, Chair. And she said she was going to be sitting together with Amy Fear, which would be the other individual that would be attending. I did want to ask though, did you want the um, staff to play that video first for Director C- Crompton?
No, no, it's good. It's good. Yeah, that's fine.
What video is it?
What is it?
Now you've piqued our interest.
Okay, sure, play it. But I need to warn you. It's two minutes. So how long is it, Melanie? It's two minutes? Anyway. This is a marketing uh, video. And so prepare yourself to be like, oh my goodness. But I wanted to uh, share it, and I was going to share it at the beginning, because our community went through a community branding process where we really tried to understand what matters to us. Uh, and, 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 and um, and came up with this concept of thrill being a big deal for us. You know what? It is such a mar- I'm, I, anyway. Enjoy the video. Enjoy the video.
Just one moment, I'll have that up for you.
Okay.
I mean, it's no barn raising in Paverden.
It's true. It's not even close to a barn raising. So the reason I wanted to share that is that um, all the faces that you see there are Whistlerites. Um, and we, when we went through the place branding piece, we, we really came to the end with this recognition that for us, the fact that we're engaged in tourism means something for us. It's our only industry. And that sort of bet, the benefits and the costs of living in a tourism town. Um, and, and, and having everything that you live and be kind of informed by and immersed in tourism. Um, changes a lot about who you are. And all of those kids skiing and those kids on bikes and those people serving food to people um, are, are families and friends and people who call this place their home. And every day for them is this uh, engagement in tourism. Um, and so um, it, it sort of informs who we are as people and who we are as a community. And, and that um, is sort of what led to that uh, video. We all brought together a bunch of community members and they brought an object that defines Whistler for them. And then we had this conversation about what it means to live in this place. And it took a long time. But that's what we came up with in the end. So that's sort of the definition of, of our town, a little bit. I mean, it's way deeper than that, but that gives you a sense of the marketing definition for our town.
Cinematographer's dream.
You tricked me into showing the video.
I think I should run for office.
I won't vote for me. Looks shady.
All right. Well, thank you very much. And you've brought us perfectly on time to nine thirty for our delegation. So that was
Excellent.
Excellent timing. Thank you very much. All right.
Thank you, Chair, admitting them.
All right. Good morning.
Good morning.
I see it's not just Claire. There's, who's with you today?
This is Amy, Amy Fear. She is the treasurer for the PVTA.
Okay.
Supporting us. Yeah.
Excellent. Well, welcome to you both. Thank you so much for joining us today. Um, we will turn it over to you to hear your presentation.
That's great. Thank you. Um, so yeah, thank you so much for having us. Um, we are here today. Uh, I'm representing a uh, community coalition and it's a group of Uh, I'm representing a uh community coalition, and it's a group of uh community members who have come together to pick up on the many efforts that we've seen in the past of um gaining some sort of safe access over the train bridge. That is access from Nailaway in Pemberton. Um, so if you could move on to the next slide, please. Okay, so um, yeah, so all of the community members and of course, all of the land that we're talking about is on the unceded traditional territories of the Lilwattan and um Stalium Nation. Um, and what we've tried to do in terms of um moving forward with this with this is we've been in touch with as many different organizations as we can to get as much information um and access as many resources as possible to see that we're doing something that um really represents what the community wants to uh achieve. So in terms of published documents, we have found in the Riverside Wetlands uh Skimem Community Park Management Plan, um, there is a point on education. The park's proximity to schools and residential areas allows for a diverse range of learning opportunities in a natural setting. Riverside Park has potential to provide educational opportunities for recreation use as well as teachings about plants, wildlife, archaeological sites, and Lewat peoples' historic use and occupation of the area. Within their section under Recreation and Safe Access to the Park, the document outlines that work with CN Rail for a public walkway along the CN Rail Bridge is one of their priorities. We've also found in the Pemberton Valley Recreation Trails Management Plan from 2020 that they um quote, "To enable an integrated trail system within the Pemberton area, it will be necessary to cross existing rail rights-of-way. Securing safe and legal crossings will continue to be a priority in future trails planning." Um, I I recognize also, there's probably people on this meeting who know a lot about this park. So sorry if I repeat some of the information that they know already, because I know um, the SLRD has been really engaged in um uh in the activities associated with the Riverside Wetlands. Uh, so, so this might feel very familiar. Uh, next slide, please. So within this document, this is something that we are going to be, or we have actually shown parts of this to certain people within CN Rail, but I think what it does um, is it really shows the spectacular nature of this area right in town uh or so close to town. It really is a beautiful, diverse area that is a real um asset to the community. Um, as I'm sure you know, Pemberton is quite unique in that it's it's as a um a natural area where coast meets mountain. But this particular little plot is also quite unique in that it's one of the few areas in Pemberton because of the diking infrastructure. It's one of the few areas now where river traverses all the way up to mountains. So you do get really specific, really incredible um um species and biodiversity. Um, and furthermore, it's a wetland. It's it's an example of what the whole of the valley would have looked like before it was um uh dyked and used for farming. So it's a really interesting historical um uh um natural environment, a snippet of what Pemberton originally was. Next slide, please. So one of the things that we're trying to do is understand how big of an issue this is. And that would be down to how many people are accessing um the park using the railway. Uh, one of the issues we've come across when we're speaking to CN Rail is we get the impression that uh we've had to work really hard to let them understand that we are not a group of users of the bridge. It's not, we want to use the bridge. What's happening here is that we're a collection of community members who've recognized that there are a huge number of very diverse types of people using this bridge. It's not a case that you can go onto a Facebook forum and say, don't use the bridge anymore. It's just too big an issue to to be controlled in that way. So we've done, we've we've um had the support of BC Recs and Trails to start counting the number of people on Nailaway. So just for transparency, this is a counter that will count passersby. So it will count a deer. It might count a big dog. Um, um, but likewise, if two people are walking together, it might count them once. So there is a little bit of flex on these numbers, but we've used them really to get a guide of roughly, roughly how many people we're talking about. Um, so the recent stats, the latest stats have just come in from mid-October to uh sixteenth of October to twenty-second of February. Um, we were looking at average daily counts of eighty-five um counts. Bear in mind also, there might be a number of people who um access Nailaway to just go onto the riverside on the west side of the river. However, we do think that the majority of people are crossing the bridge. Um, on a low day, there might be uh eighteen, twenty-six, thirty people crossing. On a, on a high day, we're looking at two hundred and two, two hundred and twenty-eight, two hundred and thirty-eight crossings. So an average of eighty-five um people using it per day um estimates to an annual um user number of around thirty-one thousand. Now, that period was over the winter, so it's not allowing for many bikers. Uh, when we uh we had a six-day period where we um actually looked at who was crossing and we averaged out approximately sixty percent bikers to forty percent pedestrians. So we're just beginning to get a feel of the amount of people who are using, potentially crossing that railway. We think at the moment it's between thirty and forty thousand crossings per year. Um, we found some data from historic assessments or anecdotal evidence. Um, and it looked like in 2010, the SLRD had findings of an average of sixty round trips or a hundred and twenty crossings per day, which is i- in a similar, a a similar area to what we're looking at with our recent numbers. Um, we have some other numbers from uh the Pemberton Bike Trail Visitation Summary. Um, they count monthly ranges of two to four thousand users on Happy Trail, which is just on the opposite side of the park, which is sixty-six to a hundred and thirty-three per day. Just for a comparative number, Happy Trail is one of the most popular trails in Pemberton. Um, so on the right-hand side of this slide, we are, we've just outlined why the issue of convenience. Uh, if you're in the downtown Pemberton area, it's just over one point five kilometers to access the park using that railway bridge. It's obviously dangerous, it's and illegal. If you were to go around, you could drive around um or bike around, but walking would be, take much longer because it's almost seven kilometers to go uh the long way around, which is along the highway and Friendship Trail and up through the plateau zone. Next slide, please. So this is actually um a photo from a very similar place to the um uh one of the slides a couple previously. And what we've done with the images is really show how different the park is at different times of the year, which again supports why people go there in the winter and they go there in the summer. And it's um such a valuable place for restoration and health benefits. Next slide. So just to bring you up to speed from uh the talks with CN Rail, as we see them, as the uh as far as we can um find historically, in two thousand and three, the first initiative to gain access over the train bridge um was started by the SLRD. Um, it wasn't CN Rail then, it was BC Rail, and they they seem to be much more accommodating to community engagement and trying to find solutions. Um, the SLRD brought in engineers to draft up cost estimates for a pedestrian bridge, tapped onto the train bridge, train bridge. And it was estimated at around a hundred and forty thousand, I think, at the time. We've just found snippets of information, so I might be a little off on that one. However, CN Rail purchased the lease line from BC Rail in two thousand and five with the shake-up in management that ended the negotiations for that pedestrian bridge. Um, just on that note, what we found is that the lease that CN Rail has is a lease between CN Rail, BC Rail and the province. And um it did, it does look like there may be a route to um negotiate with CN Rail through that lease if the province were to agree that it was an issue worth discussing. That's a different issue to what we're act- that's a different route to what we're actually doing right here, right now. But it does seem like eh it, we've seen evidence that any pedestrian attachment to a railway bridge that has gone ahead we think has gone through that route of negotiation. And in many cases, it's been because a community has been physically cut off without the use of that bridge. So to carry on with the progress with um CN Rail in two thousand and ten to two thousand and twelve, that was the next big attempt uh by the SLRD to negotiate with CN Rail for access. Uh, then it was taken up in uh two thousand and eighteen. I think that was Mike Richmond in two thousand and eighteen. Um, although he made really great progress within CN Rail, there was again no positive outcome from that directly. Um, and then in December twenty twenty, we picked this up um as an initiative to see if there was a way we could really pull all of the local government together really research the case, get as much evidence as possible, and see if we could come together as as um um a sort of a a stakeholder partnership to see if negotiations with CN Rail could be more positive. Um, we have had discussions with CN Rail in February, um with thanks to the support of Jordan Sturdy. We were talking to Tyler Bannock, who is CN Rail's Public Affairs Manager. Um, he ha- he did try and support us in um getting information from their bridge instructors team, which is like the engineering group for CN Rail. And they help, every August they get together and they make plans for what they're doing every year. But they were too busy to consider the concept and said that they wouldn't consider it without an engineer's report. When we asked if they could approve it in principle pending an engineer's report, it was stonewalled. We asked if they could have an engineer report for us. The answer was no. Um, we asked if we could do our own engineer's report, and we were told we couldn't go on the bridge, so it wasn't possible. So as you can tell, the same kind of sto- stonewalling and and um uh uh real just sort of barriers in place. So we continued to push for um engagement and um ultimately, we were, Tyler recommended to us that we compile a formal request that he would submit to senior managers um that needed to be detailed, specific, and to the point. It would benefit from having a unified voice and the support of the community and all local government organizations. And that is effectively what we are doing. Um, in the meantime, we've had some support from Mike Richmond. He has managed to find us another contact who's higher up in management who will also be approaching with the same request. Next slide, please. Uh, so again, a beautiful view uh from the train bridge. This is an area that paragliders land on and um families often picnic on the beach area there. What you will notice here as well, which is quite in- incidentally, um you'll notice this area of the river, this is just north of the bridge, is really wide. And to the right-hand side of here, the river is actually eroding the land a little. And and this all, this is relevant when we come um to talk about bridge locations later on. Uh, next slide, please. So just as a stepping back a little, uh looking at growth in the area, I think we all, you know, we all, the latest statistics in in population have just come out. We all know about the increase in um uh residents in Pemberton. We, there's a number of housing developments, uh a number of proposed developments. Um, and but these figures in terms of residents um at at sort of seven thou- just over seven thousand, really so they seem so small when you think about the number of crossings, like this, this crossing is used by tourists, international visitors, regional visitors. It's become, it's been there for a couple of generations, and it's become a really well-established route to um Skimem Park. Next slide, please. And again, just a lovely spot along the bathtub trail. Uh, next slide, please. So what we've done here is just a really simple diagram um to indicate how we see this problem. Um, the issue itself, and what we have here on the right is a collection of um ovals that indicate the reasons why people are accessing this parkland. So in green, we've got all of the cultural and natural resources that this parkland represents. It's a unique um uh, it it's a nature reserve and a wetland. It's got unique biodiversity. There are um areas with First Nations cultural sites of significance, and it's a historical site. In blue, we sh- we see it's so, it's so close, so near yet so far. It's a, it's ideal for a quick hike. You can use it as a connector to get to the industrial park in the, in the good weather. And it's a direct connection to nature on on the doorstep. Um, in the orange, this is reasons why it's not gonna, the use is not gonna decline. It's only gonna get bigger. And then at the bottom here, this is the sort of vicious cycle we have with CN Rail in that the route is dangerous and illegal. There is a risk of finding injury. In response to these issues, CN Rail blocks the tracks, which actually inadvertently, well, which actually just pushes people onto the tracks for longer because they won't walk further to get back into the, into into nature on either side. And this has been going on for twenty or more years. Um, it's not solving the problem. It it will never solve the problem as far as we can see it. And then on the left here, what, who's missing out? You know, we've got three schools who, if they were to use buses to bus the kids around to um to the nature area, it would just, it's too expensive for them. You know, I work very closely with the schools. They can't afford to just throw buses on to to get students there. They could walk kids over there and have such an incredible educational resource on the doorstep. Um, and there's people who aren't using the bridge because it's illegal and it's dangerous. And if you've got young kids, it's it's just something you wouldn't want to do. If you've got elders or seniors, it's just not worth the risk. And any official camps and sports programs, um they're not allowed to. They wouldn't use it. Um, and young people who are out getting their independence, they've been told, don't do it. Um, so our approach to CN Rail is really on the issue of safety and liability that they, that we want to help them resolve. And this is what we would like to take to them to say, we've really looked at this in full. We really see the problem. We really want to help you fix it. Here are some ideas, and here is the, here are the reasons why this should happen. And here is the community-wide support for um making this happen. Next slide, please. So um locations, we know that everyone who's looked at this issue has looked at a number of locations. So we kept this slide in to sort of really just recap that. There are a number of locations. Every location has pros and cons. Um, and each potential bridge is uh a different size. We've got very rough ballpark costs on sizing of bridges. And we've got some examples of the types of bridges. Uh, but just to run through some of the issues, if we were to tack a bridge onto the existing rail bridge, ultimately CN Rail has ownership of that and has, potentially has control over that in the future. Um, every access point has ownership issues and access issues of one or another sort. Uh, convenience ease of use is always an issue. You know, if you have, say, this light blue crossing, the hundred and twenty-one meter one. If it's, if it's up on that northerly point, will people drive and park all along Pemberton Farm Road, or will people still use the train bridge because it's a little bit closer? Um, and um any bridge that does go there needs to be pretty much at the same height as the train bridge, and footings need to come down behind the dikes if there are dikes on on one side. So you can in some places end up making a really long bridge, which obviously becomes very expensive. What I don't have here is a picture of the um pedestrian bridge in Litton. So it's just south of Litton. There is a train bridge with a pedestrian tack-on, which is exactly the kind of bridge that we've been thinking of. It has a a big metal um framework over the um pedestrian crossing. Uh, and it's tacked right onto the side of the bridge. It's a really great example. So sorry, I only came across that recently, so I didn't have time to put it into this slide. Um, the yellow, the train bridge is approximately eighty meters. Um, just to give you a sense of scale, if a train bridge was tapped on to, if a pedestrian bridge was tapped on to the existing train bridge, we're looking at some very roughly, roughly, but to meet all the standards and to be um to meet code, we think it might be just under the, somewhere under a million. If it's um independent on its own, you're going one and a half million plus, and really the world's your oyster on how how much money that would end up costing. Next slide, please. So um obviously, we're here today. We're also So obviously we're here today. We're also approached LeWatt Nation. We've approached the village of Pemberton and we will be approaching our local MLA for formal support. What we'd like to propose to submit to CN Rail would be geotechnical reports. We have a sort of a baseline assessment, geotechnical report. We are in the process of getting engineers' considerations to help support how realistic it is to have a bridge. The ballpark costs, ballpark costs, as I've mentioned, and the user numbers and a narrative to support the case. And so what we were hoping from the SLRD would be a letter to support this in terms of local government support for this proposal. But also we want to show CN Rail that there is a route for a local government agency to take on the liability issue if we had a pedestrian bridge tacked on to the bridge, on to the train bridge. And it's been suggested to us that there is MIA, am I getting this right, MIA insurance, that hopefully one of the government organizations could use to take on the liability. It would really benefit us if we had that in writing from one of the government agencies when we approach CN Rail. So they have less reasons to reject us off the bat. That I think is everything I wanted to mention today. But if you have any questions, I'm more than welcome to try and answer them.
Okay, thank you. We have, we have run out of time, but I'll, Director Mack, do you want to ask a question?
Yeah, no, I, I've been at the bridge with Mayor Richmond a couple of times with Francois from CN. And, you know, we had very good discussions with him, but in the end, he very politely said no. So he's moved up the ladder now in that organization. So I think he's a really good contact. But I fully support what you're, you know, proposing and trying to do. It's, it's obviously very important for our area. So please, you know, keep me in, in the loop of what you're doing. And, you know, I can definitely talk with Mayor Mike and with Jordan Sturdy and see how we can maybe get Francois to be our spokesperson at a higher level with CN, you know. Now that the track's not being used on a day-to-day basis, like he had actually mentioned, when we went to Gateslake Park with him to look at a crossing there, he, he suggested then that in a period of time, they may phase out this line altogether. It's just so expensive to maintain and run. So that would be very beneficial, obviously, to, to all of us because you could in the end turn it into a really nice trail. But I think you just have to keep working on it and keep advocating for it. Thanks. Thank you for your presentation.
Thanks, Russell. Yeah. What we found when we talked to CN Rail about wanting to access, you know, the opportunity, the option on trains not using the line, if you ask them about that, then, then the line, you're told that the line is used regularly and anytime is train time. However, if you phone them as a potential customer, asking for a business inquiry to use the line, they'll tell you that it really needs maintenance and upgrading. And you might need to actually build a whole new line and then you're going to have to supply your own trucks. And it's a very different story. So I think really it's, it's very hard to get support for anything when you approach them. Yeah.
I have one more question in the room. Director Rich Jones, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I completely support what you're doing. I appreciate your work. When you say 60% bikers, I'm thinking it's probably more the risk takers that are going over the bridge now. And if you encourage a lot more traffic, do you think, have you got the capacity sort of manage the ecological damage on the other side? Like the sort of love it too much to death kind of scenario with easier access? That crosses my mind, but I'm sure that you've thought of that too and would be managing for it.
The parks have management plans in place. And people are using the parks already. And I would imagine that the, the, the management of the park would stay, would, would really maintain, it would be the same, it would be the same approach that we need to have for all the parks in the area as tourism and visitors grow. So I think it is important to keep an eye on that for sure. But I'm not sure whether having approved access over having illegal access is going to make a massive difference aside from school trips and access from official groups. But yes, it's something that, that all parks have to be having in play all the time. Yeah, for sure.
Just to quickly add on, because I think Claire covered everything really nicely. But it's not just the risk takers that are crossing the bridge. We're building soccer fields and recreation grounds. And this crossing is the shortest distance between town and our soccer fields, our recreation center and all the new development on the hillside. So you can get there on the friendship trail, but you're going all the way out of town around the highway coming back down. We all know that people will take the shortest route more often than not. So now my biggest concern is kids on, on there trying to, you know, ride their bikes, especially in dusk going to play soccer or come home from soccer. So I think it's a real, real safety issue that, and then one thing that I've said to this group and to CN whenever I've had a conversation is this is, this is their problem as much as ours. If, if you're saying it's yours and it's trespassing, well, then you have a real problem. Our, you know, and you can't just shut it down. So what are you going to do about this? How do you, how do we work together? And I feel like the numbers in the summer would be a lot, lot higher. I think the group has been conservative on the projections for summer ridership or usage. So thanks for doing all that, Claire.
Yeah, thanks, Mike. And yeah, with the cameras, the counter is going to stay there. So hopefully we'll have some really good concrete numbers over the, over the next year.
I couldn't tell because I don't have my glasses on, but it looks like you should update your census numbers on the population growth on that slide.
Oh, really? Did I get that wrong?
I think the new census will show substantial growth on top of that, so.
Okay, I'll double check that. Thank you.
You're up by 22%.
32.
32.
Do you have the motion to write a support letter for this group in anticipation of them meeting with CN?
Yeah, sure. So the motion is to write the letter of support on behalf of the AS and moved by Director Rich Jones, seconded by Director Rainbow. Any comments? Seeing none. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much for your presentation today.
To have a look at the, the liability aspect of the bridge, whether that should, can we have a motion to direct staff to look at what that would look like? If we were to, if a separate bridge were built, can it be liability insured to MIA? I'd like to put that motion up.
Okay, so the motion is that SLRD staff will investigate the liability with MIA and other agencies to understand the realities of this project on behalf of the SLRD. Moved by Director Richmond, seconded by Director Rainbow. Any other comments? Is there anyone opposed? Motion carries. All right, we will be in touch with you and hope to see you again soon.
Thank you so much. There is one more question. Sorry, I'm not sure I made it clear in the presentation. When we go to CN Rail, would there be someone willing or able to come as a representative from SLRD at that meeting?
CAO Helmer.
I think he should be elected.
Thank you, Chair. I think we will, I'll, I'll bring this back to staff. We'll have to look at what the timing is. And I think that if this, this work would certainly have an impact on the work plans and the budgets that have been put forward so far. So that'll be a conversation that staff will bring back to yourselves for prioritization.
I think it should be elected going to this meeting with CN Rail. So in my mind, it should be Russell, Director Mack.
Director Elliott?
I was going to put the motion on the floor that the Chair of the SRD or designate attend the meeting with CN.
Okay, moved by Director Elliott, seconded by Director Rainbow. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Director Elliott. We'll be in touch.
Thank you so much. Really, really appreciate your time. Thank you.
We are now on staff reports and we'll go to the CAO for a verbal update.
Thank you, Chair. Nothing to report today.
We'll move on then to 5.2, which is our budgets.
Thank you, Chair. Admitting, Director LaFrance.
Good morning, Director LaFrance. Welcome. Thank you for being here today. All right, we're on 5.2. We're ready to crack open the budget.
All right. So I will start with the information sheets. It's page 17 of your package, but page one of my package. And we'll just go through the non-market change just briefly. So I was working on trying to find a way to show the board exactly how much requisition would be covered under the non-market change. And the easiest way for me to do it was just to look at the tax rate and see what tax rate would be the exact same rate and use that dollar figure for 2022. And it ended up being $365,787 was covered under non-market change as, as an estimate. The total increase for, for general government, this is specifically for general government, sorry. So the, the dollar variance is 1,011, pardon?
No, I think we're getting some feedback from the, sorry.
So yeah, the, the total variance, the total increase in taxation was 1,011,000. And out of that, approximately 365,787 is covered under non-market change. That was the best calculation I could get to. And so going further down the notes, the next page, I give just the inventory changes. We've seen this last month as well for each area. And the consolidated requisitions in this package show a 56% increase in the dollar value increase for requisitions. But the tax, the taxation increase is a 27% increase. So a million dollar property would pay approximately $14.20 more in 2020 for these regional budgets. And I, I go into each, each regional budget to show what that is based on the specific budgets as well. So the, the general government budget includes all of the new approved positions as well and includes 165,000 for project work. Sorry, 160,000 for additional contracted project work for 2022. I didn't think, I didn't add this into the 2023 cost, however, because with the full complement and the additional staff, there should be some more ability internally to get the service establishment bylaws completed. But that can be readjusted with the next year's budget as well if we need more contract assistance. And within the two of these departments, 1308, there is the facilities manager starting in the 2023 budget. So the net impact to the 2022 requisition for the additive positions is approximately 461,500. And that's with the related benefits based on the, an estimate for percentage. And in 2023, that amount goes up to 602,500. And those are all of the extra positions, so 1,000 and 1308, but not including any other cost center changes. Not including any other budgets other than the regional budget. We're just focused on the regional budgets at this meeting. And the 2022 benefits do have a 5% increase estimate because that is unknown at this time. In August, we get our benefits review completed. So we can go to page, we'll go to the general government budget. Actually, sorry, we'll go to the general government section. So in that note, so it's still page three of my notes, page 19 of the agenda. So there's the two fleet vehicles included in the budget for 85,000 from reserve. So it doesn't hit the bottom line. We do have the estimated online payments in there because we want to provide debit and credit abilities to pay online. Currently, we only have deposit to the bank, the each international bank account, bank system. We did increase the legal budget 25,000 in 2022 just for the comfort level for emergency response-related legal questions we might have. The IT budget does still include the unit four upgrade, which hopefully will be, be able to complete this year, especially if there's an IT manager hired. And we also have the, the asset management software in here, but most likely won't be purchased until 2023 due to the financial software upgrade. And we do have a new server in the budget for approximately 35,000. But we don't have quotes yet for, we don't have a firm price quote yet for this. So another change to the general government budget is the time allocation expenses. So with the change in the project coordinator, you know, the, the late great Graham Haywood was in 1,000. And now the new project coordinator is in Utilities, Environmental Services Department. So there's going to be a shift from, you know, being in general government salaries to being in the time allocation from other services line for that position. So that's why that, that's gone up. And as well as it's gone up for the regional fire chief when they have to do regional plans or any other, you know, climate action review or any other emergency management regional plan. As well as emergency management staff too will be allocating their time to general government for these regional plans. So there is an FCM grant for asset management in here of 50,000 for a project to develop a corporate asset management plan. We haven't sent in that grant application yet, but that's to come shortly after the audit and after everything is completed. As right now, the finance department is slammed with strict timelines and a lot of work. So I've added a listing of all of the general government projects and separated out the new projects in a separate column. Hopefully that will suffice. That was a request from the board. So if there's any questions so far, I'll, I'll take them from the board.
We have a question from Director Rich Jones. Go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. And I'm just looking for, we have considerable amount of service area and boundary service area work to be done. I'm just looking to see if we've got some budget set aside for that.
Yeah, the boundary expansion work, is that what you're talking about?
Well, services, services establishment, Suzanne, yes. That's probably more important. Sorry.
I'm not sure I understand the question, but.
The cost of establishing the service areas that are prioritized and it's, it appears to be a tremendous amount of work. Is that its own line item or is that included in each of those service areas as a cost?
That's in salaries, basically. It's, they're, they're completed in-house. So we have that 100 That's in salaries, basically. It's, they're, they're completed in-house, so we have that hundred and fifty extra in salaries right now for that purpose. Because we still aren't really a full complement at this time. We still have to do a lot of hiring to get there.
Any other questions? Director Elliott, go ahead.
Um, I'm just curious why we would include the asset management software as a taxable item in 2022 when we are still in the hiring process and finishing off the financial software implementation and don't believe it will be going forward until 2023. Isn't it better just to put that in the 2023 part of the financial plan?
Yeah, I basically carry forward projects. It was put in the financial plan, I think in 2019, like earlier. And so it was continued to be carried forward. And I usually just do that so I don't lose track of it, but I can move it to 2023. It has no effect on the budget because it's really in surplus for that. It's only really twelve thousand and five hundred, the net cost to the SLRD because there's a fifty thousand dollar grant. But I can move that to 2023 if that, if that makes it simpler for you. For me, I'd just like to see everything carry forward.
I, I guess just from setting expectations with the board about when things will get done. And it's, if we're really not going to do it in 2022, then I wouldn't create the expectation through the budget that it'll get done in 2022. Well, that's, that's my only
Yeah, I totally understand. The way I think of it is if it happened to be able to be actioned, we have that funding to start working on it by the end of the year. So I always like to have it in case there is time to accommodate.
The I guess I have two questions related to the additional positions. The board expressed some hesitation with the IT hires and how they, they would be deployed. And then we're looking at a new IT server in advance of having those IT resources onboard to sort of create a strategy. So one, I'm wondering how we're managing that uncertainty around the IT positions, like why they're still here and what we'll know before March about how to make a, a good decision there. And secondly, how has the non-market change lift been applied to this budget to help smooth these increases in, in staffing?
I'll leave the staffing to Melanie to talk about because that's a C O. I don't really know what the plan is for. But what I can speak with IT is our current IT specialist is familiar with the servers and can complete the server change, no problem. We also have outsourced currently log dev, log, logical development that can assist us. But we would like to bring everything in-house so we don't have to have an outsourced IT component as well as have some ability to have Paul go on vacation without having to have someone in the office. So having two people in IT is kind of key for that. So there's coverage. And also right now, IT is not being properly managed and it's a big risk. We need someone to be, who knows, who has all the knowledge needed to have, you know, everything secure. And I'm not that person. I, I'm managing IT, but I have no IT education or experience. So it's a big risk. But, and for how the non-market change is in the budget, it's just based on the assessments. So in essence, it's already built into the budget. There is no separate line item for non-market change. So it's hard to explain, but it's in essence, the assessment changes. So with the assessment changes, the tax rate changes and that's, I don't know if that sufficed to answer, but that's what I got.
I guess in follow-up, what tools have we used to smooth this increase in staffing aside from delaying? So are we using, there's that carryover from, of eighty thousand dollars? Are we using this lift to help accommodate growth without? I was just surprised by the twenty-seven percent increase. And just trying to understand how we're using the growth to help us introduce these things without raising taxes this much.
Yeah, unfortunately, there's no way that I can see to not raise taxes. It's kind of, it's kind of a needed expense at this point. There is that additional funding for recruitment and retention that we still have carried forward from surplus reserve that we can reassign or we can actually just use it for these new positions. So instead of having it as a separate line item for recruitment and retention, I would just delete that line and still have the revenue transferring from operational surplus reserve, but it would just go against those salaries. That would be an option as well. So we haven't been able to spend it on recruitment and retention so far. Potentially, we could also offset the executive search firm for the C O that was just completed. I don't know what that total invoice is going to be. But there's potential we can offset that cost as well because it is a recruitment cost. I don't, I only have one invoice so far from the executive search firm and it was only about four thousand dollars. So I don't know what that total invoice will be, but that's an option as well. How does the board feel about removing that recruitment and retention expense line? Just keeping it as a, as the amount needed for the executive search firm. And then the rest will go as a buffer for salary. The salaries increase.
I think that's appropriate. Anyone else?
So do me.
Was there, was there ever a plan for recruitment and retention? Could we create a plan? Without the plan, the money's just sitting there.
Yeah, I'm not aware of any plan. We, for our recruitment processes, it's pretty similar for, for each position. It's all internal. So it would be only be useful for an executive kind of search firm, which we don't use for most of our staff components.
I'm okay with using it then.
Yep, go ahead, Director.
Question, if I leak into in camera, somebody throw something at me. But when we talked about trying to establish capacity and balance that with a new C O coming in and their ability to make their own decisions. Did we get this specific in this list? And I know we were sort of struggling with, with having money aside to build capacity. And we were trying to figure out how to pick a number. I didn't think, you know, as when we look at one thousand and the added salaries, I didn't think we'd gotten given support specific for those specific roles all of them. I knew, I thought it was just some. Am I remembering that incorrectly?
No, I, no, I don't think you missed something. I think that I'd have to look back at my notes.
I don't remember and I'm looking to the rest of the board too. I, I know we, again, we, we talked about what was, what were absolute needs right now. And we knew that the emergency personnel was one of those that, that department needs for right now. And there's discussion about what else we should decide on IT being one of those, two of those positions we thought can maybe marry. Are there savings there to be had? And as well, big part of it was having the new C O, the ability to decide on these roles. So I thought we said we were struggling with a number for the budget, but I didn't think we got this specific.
Thank you, Chair. I just went to the minutes of the last meeting where we had the RISN report on what came forward from the closed meeting and the board's direction. And that may be the same thing that Director Clark just passed to you. I'm not sure.
It is, yeah. Do you want me to read it? Okay, that the board approved the following increases in staff resources in the protective services department immediately following for the following positions, full-time emergency program coordinator, one F T E, and a part-time emergency management technician and a half F T E. That the board approved the reconsideration of IT staff positions immediately for further consideration by the board in budget discussions in February. And that the board approved the increase of contract services to support the C O transitional needs. That the board gratefully approved the recommended staff positions as a working document to be used by the leadership team and subject to change by the new C O. That the, the S L R D provides staff and elected official training for cultural safety rather than that whole role. And that the S L R D take advantage of the non-market change and bringing the approved staff positions into the organization with associated funds for these positions to be included in the next round of budget discussions for the board's consideration. So this is sort of capturing it. There's definitely some. There is capacity, but there is also, this is subject to change based on the new C O's.
Baked into this budget now, we're looking at two IT positions, Deputy Director Finance, F O I. All, and I remember the contracting to, to assist in transition and all that. I remember that resolution. But these are specific positions. I thought we weren't getting that specific. And this is why the board were struggling was because we didn't know how to build capacity into the budget and leave it sort of general for the new C O. And we talked about up to a certain amount, not that we would necessarily approve. We didn't want to green card that, you know, oh yeah, here's X amount of dollars. Go ahead and spend it on whatever stuff you want. But we want to allow that capacity within the budget. To me, this is more specifically baked into the budget. This suggests, if we put this in the budget as is, this suggests that this is what's been proven. This is what we're going forward with. I know we wanted our new C O to reevaluate the IT approach. So that's not, I don't think that's reflected here. And so again, I'm looking to the rest of the board to pick up on where we left off, which is how do we leave capacity in the budget for the new C O to make those decisions? Because the twenty-seven percent is a big increase. I agree with Director Elliott. And so this is the only area I see that, that we can slow some of that driving increase down.
Let me go to C O Hammer and then I'll go to you.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to say that although these are listed here in the actual budget itself, it's just a number. So what Director La France has put in the budget is based on the working document and the positions and values that were identified associated with that. But the board and the new C O are not constrained to follow this list of specific positions. It's not broken out in the budget on a line-by-line basis. This is, as discussed, a working document that if he came in and said that priorities needed to move from A to B or position titles changed or anything, this is not going to be baked in. And there will definitely be the ability to change anything, provided it remains within the envelope of whatever the board approves as being included in that salary piece that would then be available for that capacity piece. It's totally at your discretion. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Follow-up?
Yeah, follow-up?
Thank you. That's helpful. Yeah, because again, I found it too prescriptive. Then I guess the question for the board is, again, we're looking at a twenty-seven percent increase, which is a pretty big jump. Do we, are we comfortable with that number that's in the budget or do we spread that a little bit over into 2023? You know, the numbers are based on, not restricted to, but are based on the list in front of us in the notes. You know, we're a couple of months into 2022. Do we really think all these positions will be, that the new C O will make these decisions and hire and fill these positions on 2022? So all that said, do we reduce that number a little bit to, as Director Elliott said, soften the twenty-seven percent a little bit? That's my question for the board.
Go to Director Rebo and then Director Stoner.
I just wanted to comment on what Director Richman was asking about the input script. But I thought after I discussed the last time, we, we were specific about the emergency positions. But the rest of it, I thought we, we wanted to leave flexible. So from what C O just said, I think that covers that.
Yeah. Director Stoner, and then I have Director Elliott.
Thank you. I'm just trying to follow here. Can somebody point me to the line item that would result in the increase for general salary government? So I understand that in the description, it's a little bit more laid out in terms of the positions. But C O Hammer, you just mentioned that there's just one lump sum line item. And I'm just curious what line item that is. And then I also wanted to confirm that the emergency, the, the emergency management positions are actually in the budget.
Those positions aren't in this budget. That's in the emergency management budget, which is an E A D budget. But you'll see the time allocation, which is fifty-three thousand, two hundred, line fifty-two thousand, two hundred. And that's increased to accommodate the additional emergency management positions working on regional plans. But for the salaries line, if you go to page twenty-nine of the complete agenda package, it's salary fifty thousand, one hundred and ten, so fifty-one, one, zero. And that line item is, it's highlighted yellow as well. It's one million, eight hundred and eighty-seven thousand, six hundred and thirty-seven. Thank you.
Page is that in your report, Suzanne? Out of the fifty-four pages, which page number is it?
Page thirteen? Well, okay.
Page thirteen of my package.
Top, the, the first two yellow boxes. That answer your question, Director Stoner? Okay, I'll go to Director Elliott.
Thank you. In the descriptions that we have for these budgets, it's hard to know what's carryover and what's a new project. So if we're looking to lower the tax increase, it's hard to know which of these items are actually impacting that and which are carryover. So I thought the asset management plan was a new money, but you're telling me that's been carried over. We taxed for that back in 2019. So what in the general government description is a new taxable project? So if I don't want to touch the the capacity increase on staff, what are the taxable increases in general government for 2022 that we, the board could weigh in terms of including or not including?
Well, just correct something you mentioned. So what I said in 2019 was the software. The asset management corporate plan is a separate project. So the asset management software has been in there since 2019, it's been carried forward. But the asset management grant, that also has been carried forward from last year, but that's, that was not from 2019. So it's not that simple with the general government budget, but that 2021 budget minus forecast shows what hasn't been spent in 2021. So that's a good column to look at. And those are carryforward most likely because you'll see that same amount in 2022 budget. And then I just refer the board to that capital project listing. Those are the bigger projects for 2022 on the far right side.
What page is that?
That's in the notes on page. Page twenty of the package and I think page three of my, or page three or four of my notes. Page four of my, my notes, page twenty of the agenda package. And if you look at the far right column, those are 2022 new projects.
Okay. But I guess when I think about our budget, assessments have gone up, which would mean if we were going to keep everything status quo, we would actually see our rates go down. Is that correct?
Yeah.
And then we had this And then we had this three hundred and sixty-five thousand plus of non-market change, which is new money into the district. And so keeping everything constant, that three hundred and sixty-five thousand would help us smooth in some of these increases. And I'm trying to discern how we still ended up at a twenty-seven percent increase.
Well, the the expenses total, there's many other increases. We increased the legal, we increased the time allocation, we increased the salaries. So there's, you can't just piecemeal things like that. Sorry. It's just this with the full budget as it is, the total requisition is at the level it is. I'm sorry, I don't have any other explanation.
So there's no other way to present this budget in March so that we can see that the items that are leading to the tax increase in twenty-twenty-two?
Not without a lot of work on my part, which I have no time for. I would suggest looking at the budget minus forecast figure for the items that weren't spent in twenty-twenty-one. And that for every line item, it shows what wasn't spent. And then the twenty-twenty-two budget would show what we're requesting for this year.
No, I'll wait.
Okay, Director Damar, go ahead.
Yeah. Thank you, Chair Ford. I'm looking at the table on page four with the new projects that totaled two hundred and forty-three thousand. It'd be nice to have a little table for the, for the, for salaries and benefits in total. And on page just trying to find the
I don't recommend posting the salaries for each position, but
No, not, not each position, the total. The total wages.
Yeah, so that is in the notes. I briefly talked about it. So it's just above, it's two, it's two bullets above that chart. Oh, sorry, no, it's, where is it? It's on page three of my notes. It's the net impact, the twenty-twenty-two requisition for the added position is four hundred and sixty-one thousand five hundred.
Yeah, we started, yeah, and we started adding that up and that almost, plus all the other minor increases throughout the budget. I think that's where we get that extra twenty-seven percent increase. It'd be nice to have, yeah, as Karen mentioned, maybe if we had a nice little table of the major increases.
It is there. Yeah.
Does that answer your question, Director Damar?
Yes.
Okay, Director Rich Jones?
No.
Okay, Director Stoner, go ahead.
I, um, the SLID website upgrade. Can someone speak to that project and the timeliness of it? And rationale?
Yeah, so that's, that's an estimate currently. So we have a contractor that works at our website. They built the website. It needs an upgrade. Basically, the Drupal format that we're using has to be completely upgraded. And I guess it's a major overhaul. And that's why the cost is a little high. I would consider that high. So it's almost like a brand-new website. Same content, but they are going to review the content as well and try to fix up the content as well. But it's really just a brand-new kind of website format that's required.
Okay, and then the Regional Trails Master Plan, I believe that was board-directed out of our strategic plan. Is that, am I remembering that correctly? And is that intended to be taken on as a, or at least staff time allocation as well as contract? Is that correct?
I don't have that information, but these are all estimates at this time for these plans. We have, we don't really have a contract in place for this cost. It's just an estimate.
Okay, thank you.
CEO Helmer, do you want to?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Just to add to that, the Drupal update, the reason why it's slotted for twenty-twenty-two is that the platform we're using in its current whatever version it is, is no longer supported. So we need to migrate in order to be up to the supported level of platforms that are in place. And yes, the Regional Trails Master Plan is the combination of consultant and staff time, and that's to get the ball rolling. And it was out of the strategic planning, and the idea was that the initial steps would be engagement with the First Nations and member municipalities on what regional trails would look like. It's expected to be a multi-year project. So there would, if we embark on that, there will be costs going into future years as well. Thank you, Chair.
Any other questions at this time? Go ahead, Director Damar.
Thank you, Chair Ford. Yes, I'm looking at page, the bottom of page two and the beginning of page three, where the new positions are. And we did, I thought we did agree for twenty-twenty-two, a one position for IT, and I see two positions there. And, and, and the way it reads is for eight months in twenty-twenty-two and then full year, starting in twenty-twenty-three. So I think one of those positions can come out. And we had, we did discuss that. And, and the other ones, the other positions are at the, you know, all the rest are kind of at the discretion, all these are at discretion of this new CEO when it comes in. But you know, the, the impact for twenty-twenty-two with these not full-year positions is four hundred and sixty-three. And then next year, with the inclusion of the facilities managers, six hundred and two thousand. So just some food for thought on that whole concept. But I think personally, we did decide that we only wanted one for twenty-twenty-two.
Minutes reflect that the IT positions would be reconsidered by the new CEO. It wasn't specific.
Yeah, but the way it's worded here is that you know, that new CEO can make the decision on when any of these will take place. But in the budget, it shows some are eight months and some are six months in twenty-twenty-two.
I'll let Melanie speak to the staffing positions. I wasn't privy to the conversation.
Yes, thank you, Chair. And I don't have the benefit of having all that information either. I would just loop back to the earlier conversation that this is based on, this is so that we would be able to calculate a number to put in the budget. It was based on the working document and that all of that could be subject to change because again, it's, it's all under that line, five zero one one zero further down in the document. It's not broken out in the budget itself. This is, this is how we built the numbers that are sitting before you. So whatever direction you give us, Director LaFrance and I, we, we would take away and make whatever adjustments the board directs in that regard. And that would then have an impact on the capacity available and whatever discussions ensue with the new CEO. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Director Trent?
Yeah, that's a little bit of what I was going to say too. So as the CEO said, the number in the budget was built on, this is a framework, not prescriptive to it. And so that's what's in there. I'm hearing a few things. I'm hearing that, you know, we want to build capacity. I'm hearing we're a little bit uncomfortable with a twenty-seven percent increase. I know I am. I'm hearing from Director France that there's not the ability to really pull out line by line the, the items that are driving some of those tax increases beyond what we're seeing in the budget. So personally, to move things forward a little bit, I'm happy to look at, I'm happy to consider with the board. Working realistically, again, the salary increase is based on these potential positions or something like that. The ability for the, the new CEO to come in in March and, and fill all these positions and have them on the books at any point during this year, I, I think is really unrealistic. So I feel we do have the ability to give capacity, send that message to the CEO so that as he settles into place, he can keep bringing those sorts of ideas forward and, and build capacity in twenty-twenty-two and then beyond. So I feel like we can reduce that number on salary a little bit, which would help on the twenty-seven percent. And I'm open to whatever ideas the board has in other projects or driving tax increases that we could look at as well. But all I'm seeing is the salaries, one is the main driver. And so to me, that's the only way to do it would be to stagger this a little bit, still provide the capacity, still send that message, but stagger a little bit of these wages over twenty-twenty-three.
Thank you. Director Elliott, please.
Well, I think for my mind to do as a board is build the internal capacity of the organization. And so I'm, I'm a bit concerned at the level of contracted project work when we still haven't prioritized all of our service area establishments. That number seems very high to me. And so I'm, I'm a bit concerned that there's there's no money associated in writing with any of these additional positions, but there is for contracted project work. And maybe it's not having the Deputy Director of Finance for six months. Maybe that actually should increase to being as soon as possible and reducing the, the contracted side. So but I, I do think it's a motion that we, we should apply that. I would just like a motion on the floor to apply that recruitment budget elsewhere. Did we do that already?
Okay, I think we've talked about it, but we haven't made a formal motion. So Director Elliott makes the motion?
Can I move that we apply the carryover recruitment and retention budget to smoothing salary increases or the recruitment cost for the CEO?
Okay, moved by Director Elliott, seconded by Director Birch Jones. Any other comments on this? Seeing none. I'll call the questions. Is there anyone opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
I do also just want to talk to the board about the Regional Trails Master Plan and the real, realistic aspect of putting that in the budget for twenty-twenty-two when we're trying to build capacity elsewhere and build service area establishments and whether that really is a good use of our tax dollars this year. And maybe it should be delayed. So I put that question on the floor to my colleague.
Would anyone like to make a comment to that? Director Crofted, go ahead. Sorry, Director Stoner, I'll come back to you.
Just wondering what taking that out would do, like what it would, what, what would be no longer accomplished with that money being removed? I guess that's a question for CEO Helmer.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. So I think that the impact would be that we wouldn't commence that work in twenty-twenty-two or would it would be, there would be minimal staff time and no consulting fees associated with regional trails. That, that's at the board's discretion, whether that's to move forward this year. You might want to wait until post-election to commence that work. So you have a full stretch of a new term of office in order to look at regional trails. But certainly happy to take the board's direction in either direction. This was because it was a strategic priority that it's here today. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I was just through, Chair. It was the just understanding the specifics of it. Is it the feasibility study piece that is planned for this year?
It's really the pre-planning place, that piece around engagement and starting the dialogue because it's going to be quite a big thing. I don't think that we want to rush into doing the plan itself until we have that pre-meeting, pre-engagement discussionary piece about what will a regional parks and trails plan look like.
You, CEO, thank you, Chair, sorry.
Thank you. I'll go to Director Stoner and then I've got Director Birch Jones.
Thank you. In response to Director Elliott's question, I had a similar thought about the Trails Master Plan and the timing of it. I think we're trying to bite off a lot in the last few months of this term and maybe kicking that project off is not as high a priority at this moment. Although I do think it will have good value in the long term. So I'd be willing to entertain a reduction in that space. I did just have two clarifying questions as well for Director LaFrance. The first is the asset management plan. We're at sixty-five thousand dollars, but it says fifty of it will be offset by the FCM grant. Can I just confirm that if we are not successful in getting the FCM grant, we won't use tax requisition money? Does that project just get deferred?
Yes, we wouldn't be able to complete that project without some kind of additional funding. The alternative to using the FCM grant would be the gas tax community work fund from all of the different, from every area. So right now, we separate it by area based on a few factors. But that would be an option if we didn't get the grant.
Okay. And then my other question is just in terms of the salaries. Again, there's, looks like there's the surplus in twenty-twenty-one. I'm assuming that's being carried forward and used to smooth out the new proposed positions in twenty-twenty-two? Or is that just underspent? Oh, yeah.
I just missed a little bit of the beginning of your question, but are you talking about the final surplus of the year for twenty-twenty-one?
No, so in the salaries line item, five zero one one zero, between the difference between the twenty-twenty-one budget and forecast, there's seventy-seven thousand dollars. I just want to make sure that that is being used as carryforward to smooth over the incoming positions for twenty-twenty-two.
Yeah, all of the twenty-twenty-one forecast minus budget amounts are carried forward into the surplus deficit from prior year. And it's basically, we didn't hire all the positions in twenty-twenty-one that we had budgeted for. There was one physician of finance that we didn't hire.
Point of order? Are we still debating the resolution that was put on the table?
No, I already called the question on that.
Thank you.
Director, Director Damar, go ahead.
So I can make a ask a question on the trails?
Oh, no, the motion previously about moving the recruiting and retention. That motion is passed and we've moved past that. You can ask questions about Trail Master Plan.
Yeah, I, I really support, like it, it looks like twenty thousand dollars of staff time. And where's the other fifty thousand dollars coming from? The tax requisition? Or is it going to be a grant or a fund?
Currently, it is all tax requisition, the seventy thousand dollars.
Have we looked for any funding yet?
Not that I'm aware of.
For the whole project? For the whole project? There's got to be some funding out there for a project like that.
But you also need the staff time to write the grants and search for the grants and then that comes from something else.
Well, we could use our, we could use our grant writer for that purpose. I think we really need to look at some grant funding for a project like this. So I'm in favor of removing it and looking for some grant funding. And that would also, we've got various different ways that we can look for grants.
Yep, go ahead Director.
So I'm hearing a sort of a combination of a deferring of that budget as well as an expiration for funding opportunities for it. So try to keep things moving on that is the rest. If the rest of the board is comfortable with removing that from the 2022 budget, I don't think we should rely solely on funding, but we can push it to 2023 with the intention of looking for grant opportunities at the same time. So I'll put that motion on. That doesn't require a motion. Does that require a motion? It's just removing it.
To remove the?
To push the master, trails master plan budget to 2023 and at the same time, look for potential funding opportunities for that project.
Okay, are you seconding that?
I need some clarification and it goes back to something Suzanne said. But still talking about that topic, this master plan, Suzanne also mentioned Ann Parks. And so I wanted to go, are we talking about the whole region here or is this the See the Sky master plan? When Sal refers to a grant writer, I go, but that's in the north and I think this just pertains to Pemberton and so. Is that right?
Director LaFrance or CEO Helmer, go ahead.
Yes, thank you Chair. So the, the master plan is what came out of the strategic planning, which was the, the full regional district, all areas, north, southeast, west, municipalities, electoral areas. So that's separate and apart from the individual community parks, for example, that each electoral area director would set up, which would be their local, regional, sub-regional parks. And, and so this is really everybody in that piece.
If somewhat, not really everybody, in my recollection anyway, was that what we were looking at, what we have at the moment is that this See the Sky trail, there is already a plan and a trail largely in place there. Some things that developing communities are looking to do to, to plug into that, things that municipalities are planning to do. And my recollection as well, why we're concerned about is that we have nowhere a plan for trails in the, in the north. So if you look at this and if Director DeMar just suggested that their grant writer could look for money, but it would be just for the north, that, that makes sense to me. And we, I think at some point, need to be including that northern area in, in the, in the master plan for the whole region. But I don't think there's the same urgency for the See the Sky. There are some things we need to do to patch it up, to fix it up. But we have a pretty good, I think we've got a pretty good trail system and have developed it well over the last few years. But I could see that coming right out of the budget, that $70,000.
That was a separate project that came out of the strategic plan to basically map an overlay of the whole region to understand what trails are good, what trails are needed, where is it in complete disarray? And understand the whole plan. That's a project of its own. That's what this line item is. And I think the recommendation is that we move that planning process in 2023. Keep it on the books, does not focus on it right now. And then if NDIS or Area A wants to do, you know, to apply for a grant to investigate the feasibility of a trail or a park in Area A, you can still do that. It's not out of this project budget. This project budget is separate. So I have a mover on the motion. I have a seconder in Director Birch Jones. I'll open the floor for any other comments to that.
Is it the entire amount or 50,000 of that?
No, 70,000, the entire 70,000. That 20 is included.
Are there any other comments from anybody online? Go ahead, Director DeMar.
Yes, the other regional districts have a trail master plan and Cascade Environmental has done them. And what they do, they parse off all the various regions, you know, districts and electoral areas. So that if, they all kind of go under the same template, but they're all individual areas. So there are templates out there already that where regional districts have done this. So it'd be a really good exercise for the SRD to, to move forward on it, for sure. So I'm in favor of it holistically, but at this time, with the increases that we have, I think we can defer it to 2023 and look for funding as.
That's the motion. Okay, I'm calling the question. Is there anyone opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, we'll go back to Director LaFrance.
So that's, that's a little bit of a help towards that 27%. Is there any appetite to look at the salary increases and phasing some of that, a portion of that, pick a number into 2023? Again, a question for the board. Looking realistically whether these positions will be hired. Not necessarily these, but that amount in 2023 will be in place. I feel like we're pretty safe to push at least a chunk of that, pick a number, 100,000 to next year. So is anybody else thinking that way or people? Okay, is what we've done so far.
Director Elliott, go ahead.
I certainly would like to see that number drop. But again, my preference is to see it maybe changed with regard to IT and some of the consulting fees. I think the other positions are more compelling to me. I'm not sure we need three IT positions at this point, so. But without knowing the salary figures for the other positions, it's just difficult for me to pick a number. Because I suppose what we want is for our new CIO to look through this and decide his preference for where to put the emphasis in 2022. So, you know, I'd like to say something like $500,000. But, but it's, I, I don't know how that impacts, you know, there's no salary amount associated with the records management, finance. Because I'd like to pull it out of specific areas. So that's my challenge right now.
CEO Helmer, to respond to that?
Yes, thank you Chair. That's, that's what I was thinking is that the, the tables and spreadsheets that were created as part of that working document could be available and could be brought forward if the board wanted to have a closed discussion about those budget pieces and, and look at that in finer detail.
Okay. Director Trent, follow up? On the same topic?
Yeah, yeah, I just, I totally understand and agree with Director Elliott's comments. I still think it's a little bit vague or high level anyway, because we're just trying to put some capacity in place for the new CEO to make these decisions. So I agree, the IT seems like a lot and that's one area we can cut down. But I still feel like we're somewhat picking a number. Like I was in the same ballpark. I was going to say, let's reduce it by about $100,000. If there's a $500,000 window or cushion for the new CIO to come in for new salaries, to fill $500,000 of new salaries, three months into the calendar year, I think is more than enough for that person to build capacity within our organization. I think trying to do more than that in one year is actually rushing the process. In fact, I would be comfortable with four, but I know we all want to build capacity here. So for me, that, you know, I totally respect Director Elliott's kinds. I don't think it gets us that much further. I believe we're just trying to give him that capacity within the budget. So if the board wants to put 500,000, I would support it. I would even look a little bit more at that because I think that's a reasonable amount to work with in an eight, nine month period.
Responding to that, CEO Helmer, and then I'll go to Director DeMar.
Thank you Chair. Just to remind the board that on page three, the total estimated impact for salaries and benefits is 461,500. The rest of the increases to the budget are non-salary related or are coming across from emergency services, the, the legal increase, the project work of 243,000, all those other things that lead up to the million. So 461.5 is the total increase for 2022 for salaries.
Does that include the 150 for consultant though?
That includes the, all of the things that are listed above.
Additional contract of 160.
So that, so that is actually in order to cover the service establishment work that was being discussed by the board and prioritized.
I understand that, but the question is, does the 468 number that you just quoted include the 160 for that contractor? Does it include that?
Yes, it does. Yes.
Okay, Director DeMar.
Thank you Chair, Board. The, one of the issues I've got is that we've got this increase this year and the main elements are the new hires, new employee, new staff and the projects. And plus we've had an increase in the tax requisition in the, sorry, the assessment. Next year, we don't know what's going to happen with the assessment, but we're going to have projects again and we're going to have another major increase, 602,000 in staff costs. So we're, you know, if we don't smooth it out, because we're going to be increasing, whether we like it or not, and maybe we look at, how do we smooth it this year and then add on again next year? Because we don't know what's going to happen next year, but we're saying that, you know, from this report, then 2023, we're going to have 602,500 increase in salaries over where we're at right now in 2021. So, you know, if we, if we didn't do these new hires this year, then next year, we're going to have a major increase. So I just want, it's just a comment.
Is that correct, Director LaFrance?
Yeah, it's 460 estimate for 2022 for those portion of the year we're hiring. So there was multiple different six month, eight month. But in 2023, with the full year, it ends up being about 602,000 for this new position, for the full.
But not, but not in addition to the 461 from this year. We won't be a million dollars over.
No, 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 no. Yeah, no, it's just for the 2023 year.
Thank you for that clarity and thank you for the comment, Director DeMar. You wanted to say something? Sorry, Director Birch Jones?
Just a question on page four of Mr. LaFrance's report. The Community Energy and Climate Action Plan, the Climate Adaptation Assessment, those add up to $50,000. And are those not things that our new climate and resilience coordinator, I can't remember the proper title, but isn't that work that that person will be doing with the salary that is in a separate budget than what we're seeing here?
So she is within 1,000, so that climate specialist person is in 1,000. And so I was told to put an estimate for these projects, but it's a very big ballpark estimate. So potentially instead of removing the positions, because we are drastically understaffed in this organization drastically. Like Sunshine Coast Regional District Finance Department, it's like a million plus in salaries alone, just so you know. But I would recommend maybe taking those project costs down to a reasonable level considering all the projects we have to do this, this coming year. And because they're estimates at this point.
This, I feel, I mean, this is dear to my heart and I feel that these projects are way overdue, but we haven't done them to this point. But I'm just saying, isn't that something that our new staff person would do?
These aren't consultant fees. These are resources for those projects to be accomplished. And it's like a very general assumption of those rates and there is grants for those as well.
Yes.
Yeah, so we have to account for them, but they will be back. That's what I'm looking for. Right, Director LaFrance, we will
Or you're the first for them, you mean?
More than likely through the grants that they can apply for. Yeah.
Is that what you mean?
Yeah.
So these are costs, if I can help, so these are costs on top of, on top of what the staff member is going to be doing. These are additional costs. And the idea is put $50,000 to backside. Hopefully we don't need to, we could find some funding for it. Is that right?
That's what I see. Yeah, that's what I saw.
So potentially, similar to what the board decided with the regional trails, for these projects, we can say that grants would be required to complete them. And so we would put a potential grant in, in play as well, so the, the cost wouldn't be taxation.
Okay, I have Director Rainbow then Director Elliott.
My comment is that for years, we have not been able to provide in the electoral areas the kind of service to our residents that municipalities are able to provide their residents. We've talked about improving the service that we provide. We've talked about shortening the time it takes to get certain things done. And we can only do that with more staff. And more staff means more money. There's absolutely no way around that. We're either muddle along the way we're doing right now. Where certainly throughout my area, people are not satisfied with the SRD. They're happy with individuals when they, when they meet an individual from this department who helps out with something, an individual from that department. There's not concerns there, but the concerns are that the length of time it takes to get anything done. And that's simply because we don't have the staff, we don't have the capacity. My preference would be, given that this is the end of the term and we have a new CIO coming in, my preference would be to leave this budget at the 20, whatever percent it is, 26,700 or whatever. And have that in there to allow him to, to work with it and to set it up for the next term and for the next board. Make our, our direction clear that we want, we want to improve what we're able to do as an organization. And we recognize that the only way to do that is, is to significantly increase taxes. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Elliott?
Is the Community Energy and Climate Action Plan and the Climate Adaptation Assessment new taxable items? Are they being carried over?
They were added into the budget last year as a taxable item, so it is carrying over. But if we add the requirement for a grant, I would put that additional revenue into 2022 and then we would have that saved. But if we add the requirement for a grant, I would put that additional revenue into twenty twenty two, and then we would have that savings. If that, does that answer your question?
What would we use that money for then?
It would be reduction to the taxation.
But we taxed for it last year.
Yep, so it's carrying forward in the surplus, but if we now require a grant for it, we can reduce the taxation in twenty twenty two.
Our new climate person is now on board. And so
The additional thirty thousand.
C A O, I just, can I ask my question, please? C A O Helmer? Um, has this person not created their work plan for twenty twenty two? With enough visibility to know whether these funds are required? We don't want to slow down climate work by making her apply for grants, because this plan was due like four years ago. So has she had time to map out her year?
Uh, yeah, through the chair, we do have, um, a number of the items that are now included in the work plan for that department for the climate action work. Um, she has, um, I can give you a very quick summary of the plan and, uh, also let you know that she's applied for a grant and, uh, and the board approved yesterday an application for an additional grant. So the intention is to offset all of the planned cost to the greatest extent possible. That's something we all have grants come across our desks every day, and if there's an opportunity to save money by leveraging what we have to get more or by reducing so that we have a surplus, we always look to do that. So her plans are initially during the first quarter to engage with our municipal and First Nations partners to review what's already in place and make those contacts and networks and take a look at what the S L R D's already been doing. Through the second quarter to be forming a regional climate action and resilience, uh, a coalition of the, of the, like, really what we want, that collaboration between ourselves and the other organizations, as well as developing the project methodology, methodology and beginning to execute the plan for climate action and resilience, which is one of our top two strategic priorities that we're working on. Uh, Q three is gonna be stakeholder engagement, and then into Q four, developing the initial plan and the resilience framework.
So she'll need some of this money for modeling and working with experts like Community Energy Association to help us build out our plan. And I guess before we make a final decision is if she's not starting that, that, that planning work until later in the year, does she need the whole fifty thousand dollars? Or can we come back with a more, um, mature estimate, uh, in March?
Uh, through the chair, yes, March will be when we adopt our budget, but, uh, staff can certainly take that, take that away as an action and have that conversation and say, realistically, based on what we expect things to be, can that number be reduced? Um, we can have that conversation, and if that's realistic and practical to do that, then we can, we can make that adjustment as well.
That would be my recommendation. I don't want to slow her down, but if, if she really isn't gonna get to both of these pieces of work and, and spend all that money in twenty twenty two, I think we need to be also realistic about that. Thank you.
Thank you, and Director Richmond?
So, yeah, that's where I was going. I agree with that. I, I, I think there's a lot of climate action related grants out there that we need to look at, but I don't want to put a requirement, uh, to do the work on receiving a grant. Um, and I think Director Elliot's question is fair, you know, is there, is it realistic that those funds all be used this year? So I would like to put a motion on the floor that, that the budget be brought back in March, um, to come back with that information, um, to whether or not some of those, uh, climate action funds can be spread over to twenty twenty three, as well as removing, I'm gonna pick a number, eighty thousand dollars out of the salaries budget from the I T, uh, portion of the salary increases. Um, I know we want to increase capacity. I don't disagree with any of Director Rainbow's comments. I just think it's about being realistic in terms of how much capacity can be built in this year. And yes, we want to send that message, but this is our taxpayers' money and all of our taxes are going up, so I want to make sure we're careful. So I'd like to see the budget come back with eighty thousand dollars in salaries. I'll pick that number removed from the I T area. Um, and as well as the Trails Master Plan pushed down the road to twenty twenty three. Yeah, that's my motion, that the budget be brought back with those three pieces of information or changes.
I can hear that question.
Um, like, so we already have the resolution, I already have the resolution for pushing the Master Trails Plan.
Yeah.
Um, so the, the eighty thousand, I understand, but then the comment about spreading the climate action items into twenty twenty three.
The, the question, Director Elliot, was that, that our new staff member in this department bring forward an estimate for March, whether the, she will need the full fifty percent, uh, fifty thousand dollars in twenty twenty two, or whether that some of that can be allocated or, or held back and then
And applied against a tax increase, so that, that's what I want to know. It's
Yeah, so we want a work plan to show when it's gonna get spent.
And our, our finance director has that header come up?
Oh, sorry, Director LeFrance?
Um, I'd just like to caution against setting it against I T. I think that a conversation needs to be had with the new incoming C A O as to where to appropriately put the salary. So I agree that maybe we can reduce some eighty K if that's what the board requires, but not specifically for I T. Um, that's too much for one position. Like, we have two positions, but one is a manager position that is ultimately required, I believe. So I, I don't want to say, I, I don't want to be too prescriptive with the reduction in the salaries as to which position.
Yeah, it can be less prescriptive. I'd like to remove eighty thousand dollars out of the general government salaries uh, for the next iteration of the budget, and that information be brought back with regards to the climate action plan and how much of those funds are needed in twenty twenty two. That's my motion.
Okay, that's clear. Seconded by Director Burge Jones.
Thank you.
Director Stoner, was your comment to this motion, or is it a new comment?
But The motion. Uh, I guess, I, do we have a reducing by eight and all have
Jenna, we can't understand you. You're
How's that just?
Is that any better?
Yeah.
Um, the broadening of the motion was helpful for me in terms of not specifying positions, because I think we were trying to just provide a general pool of funds there to increase capacity, so that's helpful. My question was, um, do we have a sense of what reducing the budget by eighty thousand will do for the percentage of tax increase? Like, I, I'm, I appreciate Director Richmond's effort to just lob a number out there. I'm just trying to figure out whether that's like, will put me in a comfort zone or not.
Okay, so rather than putting staff on the spot to figuring that number right now, can we bring that back in March with this motion?
Yeah.
Okay. Everyone comfortable with that? Director Elliot?
Can I make a friendly amendment to bump this up to a hundred K?
Yeah.
And, and can we also, I don't know if it was broad enough in my motion, that I also have a look at the consultant portion. So I took away, I, I backed off from the I T specific, but I would like, I will support the amendment to bring it to a hundred thousand dollars and to look at salaries and consultant fees for one thousand.
Okay, Kristen, do you want to read that back?
Is that a separate motion for the amendment, or am I
No, I think it's a friendly amendment, because I think it supports the intention of the original motion.
Same. Yeah, so we have, um, we're removing a hundred thousand from the general government salaries and consultant fees.
Right.
Um, and bringing back information about, um, how much, um, how much funding the, um, climate action specialist needs for twenty twenty two.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Final comments? I'll call the question. Is there anyone opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for that. Okay, where are we at? Are we comfortable? Uh, Director Elliot, go ahead.
Um, if the chair is amendable, a five-minute recess would be most desirable.
I am fine with that. Eleven twenty six, everyone come back, please.
Eleven twenty?
No, eleven twenty six.
We have a full day. We have not We're gonna have lunch soon, so let's
Jen, can you remind me what's the lunch?
Lunch will be at twelve thirty?
Twelve thirty?
Uh, yeah.
And Jen will be done, as you said, by noon?
No.
Sorry.
I, I will be though, so I have I gotta run down to the city, but, um,
Home, please turn the cameras on, let us know that you're back. Um, Jenna, Russell, Jack, Karen, so Hey, I'm calling this meeting back to order. So we're currently in the Committee of the Whole. We are recessing the Committee of the Whole and reopening the regular board meeting to open. I'll call this meeting back to order. And then can I ask that someone please make a motion that we go into close, moved by Director Burge Jones, seconded by Director Richmond. Is there anyone opposed?